It is at seven o'clock. I would like to call this meeting to order. Would you please stand and join me for the spread of wages in the red section, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence on behalf of Board Member Jackie Decker. Thank you.
My name is Don Lewis, and I'm the president of the school board. Two minutes left. Heather Sacks, vice president. Jackie Decker, secretary. Michelle Wall, member. Matt Hankins, member. And two minutes right is our interim superintendent, Dr. William Roberson. On behalf of the board and the administration, I'd like to welcome you to the September 16, 2021 meeting of the board trustees of the MSD of Martinsville. I thank you for attending and taking an interest in our school district. This meeting is a meeting of the school board in public for the purpose of conducting its business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Opportunities for participation were we permitted in accordance with Policy B 250. I would like to remind everyone that forty-eight hours prior to our meetings or regular monthly meetings, all meeting documents are now posted on our website for use of you in advance of the meetings. Tonight, we have a special treat for the price of admission, which is the same as always. Instead of one meeting, you are actually going to have four meetings this evening. Prior to our regular meeting, we will have a budget meeting, a budget hearing, and then we will also have a bond hearing and additional appropriation hearing. So at this time, I would like to call to order our budget hearing. I'd like to introduce Mr. Chad Blacklock.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us coming out for your public hearing tonight. So this is the public hearing on the 2022 budget, the 2022-2026 School Bus Replacement Plan and the 2022 through 2024 Capital Projects Plan. I'm just going to go through a few highlights of the budget. I've had the pleasure over the last couple of months working with Dr. Roberson and Whitney, your treasurer in the office, which has been fantastic to work with to help prepare your budget for 2022. So I just wanted to go through a little bit of the process. Like I said, I'm not going to speak for too long here because I know you have a heavy agenda. But you know, the budget process, everything that you see in the budget really is collaboration between myself, Dr. Roberson, and specifically Whitney and your treasurer in the office. The Form 3, the capital projects and the school bus replacement plan have all been published on the school corporation website and also with the Department of Local Government Finance website, which is called Gateway. And those are statutory requirements that we have to publish there. And your budget adoption will be adjourned October 21st. Some of the guiding principles that we used when creating the budget, we wanted to maintain a total tax rate that was very similar to your 2021 tax rate. So we wanted to keep that total tax rate level. You did have some nice assessed value growth this year of almost 7%, which has been pretty common across Golden County. Golden County has whole, all the school districts are seeing assessed value growth in that 5, even 8% area. So that's pretty consistent with the county. We wanted to make sure in your operations fund that we raised your maximum levy, which is a statutory amount that we can raise. We wanted to make sure that the school corporation leveraged those dollars to its max. We also wanted to make sure that you can maintain a 15% transfer from the education to operations fund. So we wanted to make sure in the budget that we maximize that transfer, which we did. And we also wanted to make sure that your budget appropriations and levies were obviously sufficient enough to fund the school corporation expenditures in the 2022 school. And I just got a little snapshot there of the Form 3. The Form 3 was really the notice of the public hearing tonight for the taxpayers. And on the Form 3 is the budget and levy estimates for 2022. This chart, which is... Okay, please don't. This chart, I just wanted to go through and show this is just merely a comparison between the 2021 advertised appropriations and budgets and levies versus the actual certified appropriations and levies. And then I wanted to compare that to the 2022 advertised appropriations and levies versus how we think the certified levies will come back from. We always advertise the appropriations and the levies and even the tax rate a little higher in the publication than we know is going to come back in. There is a process for that after you guys adopt. There's a process through the state public 1782 notes process. And that's where we kind of clean things up and we get that tax rate down to where we really want it to be and make sure that we're maximizing the levy. So this is kind of the third step of a multi-step process that we'll go through. So purely the point here. And I also showed down here your assessed value, what the change in that has been. You had about 7.3% growth in '21 and about, almost close to 7% growth in 2022. So that's what this chart represents. So you can just kind of see what we've done this year compared to last year. So I'm going to actually stop there. Like I said, I wanted to keep the progress short. Does the board have any questions or anything you'd like to mention? Maybe 40% of the questions. So we've got several other steps ahead of us in the voting process. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, for each of these hearings, at the end of the hearings, we do have public comments available. If there's anyone that would like to have a public comment or a question for Mr. Blacklock or the 22 budget, that's the time. Okay. If there are none, then I'd like to entertain a motion to close this hearing. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of closing the budget hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All vote, same sign. Motion carries. The budget hearing for '22 is now closed. The second hearing here this evening is the 1028 hearing for the bond project. I'd like to at this time turn it over to Jacob McKellen with Bose, McKinney, and Evans.
Hello, everyone. Jacob McKellen, Bose, McKinney, Evans. I'm serving as your bond counsel on this transaction. If I can, I'll kind of go over high level the proceedings we'll go through tonight so it all makes sense. And then I'll get into the specifics for this public hearing. So tonight, there'll be three actions before you. One is, I guess the first step is the 1028 hearing and then a resolution related to that 1028 hearing. And then a bond resolution related to the bond that will be issued to fund that project. That's a bond in an amount of, not to exceed $1,200,000. And then there'll be an action item if you're regular getting to vote on that resolution. And then we'll have the appropriation hearing as well after this hearing as part of appropriating the funds from bond into the project. So this first resolution is a 1028 resolution. It's statutorily required because the project will exceed 1 million, or is anticipated to exceed 1 million dollars. In adoption of this, or in kind of undertaking this project, the next step during regular session will be to take into account the resolution, where you'll find, where you'll need to find the project will serve to provide better educational opportunities for students at the school. And you'll also, through this public hearing, need to consider the tax impact of the project. So to just read into the record, the project consists of improvement, renovation, acquisition, and equipping in school corporation facilities, including but not limited to elevator installation, renovations, improvements, and upgrades at the school corporation's central education center, the acquisition of an admin table for the school corporation's high school science department, and other renovations, improvements, equipping, and upgrades at all school corporation facilities. Again, the project is anticipated to be in and out at not to exceed $1,200,000. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Roberson. He'll talk about the need for the project.
Okay, we have an opportunity to do this project without raising the tax rate. Tax rate will be a lot different. So company AB went up. We have an opportunity to do a few things. One, will be an elevator that is built in. No, the elevator is not for me. By the time it's in, I'll probably be gone. I've heard people say, oh, you're putting it in because you're an old guy. But we have people here that are an age where they're carrying up heavy boxes of desks and things like that. They have people handicapped. You know, this will make you seem compliant with the American Disability Act. And this seems a bit talked about. I've heard it been talked about for years. This is a good opportunity to do it. Another thing is the science table that was mentioned. I'll try to pronounce it. But this is going to put us in a league that I know very many schools that they in Indiana have this. It's a digital table with science class and anatomy. Can do all kinds of things digitally. And so I was over there at the high school in July and they showed it to me and really thought that that would be a great thing to have in their class. We had that opportunity to do it and kind of be trend center for the state. The last part is what we're going to do with the other amount, which is about 660,000, is a roof at the high school. Do a roof project at the high school. Schools are constantly upgrading roofs. Yeah, kind of put them in schedule. We have an opportunity to do this instead of doing it without the operating fund. Give us money, the operating fund, give other things. So that's basically what the project is. Once again, we're not raising the tax rate. Get some science equipment that I am excited about. And I know they are too. Some roof project and then an elevator here in the building.
Without, turn it over to Reverend Michael Steeple and actually talk about the tax impact.
Hi, good evening. Luke Roberson, Mr. Steeple. We serve as municipal advisor to the school corporation on this bond issue. I've got a presentation we're going to pull up here in a second to talk about the potential tax rate attack or lack thereof, as Dr. Roberson alluded to, for this specific bond issue. So the first thing that we do at the time we look at structure and new bond issue is we start, if we do look at the school corporation without stating debt obligation. So in the bar graph there, we listed all the school corporation without stating debt. In the red line, there's the school corporation's projected tax rate. You can see in 2021, it's at about 15 cents. And there's going to be a drop in 2022. And that is in large part due to the school corporation's net assessed value growth. And then thereafter, there's quite a bit of debt falling off, which I'll get to in a second here. So the chart that I just showed is all in gray now. That's the current debt service payments. And blue is the projected 2021 payments. Again, the red line is the projected debt service tax rate with this bond issue factored in. You can see in 2022, there's a slight uptick in the debt service rate, which is on purpose, and I'll get to that on the next slide. And then in 2023, it's pretty much equivalent to that rate. But then it also leaves debt service capacity in the future for the school corporation to come back and fund additional projects in the next couple of years. And the reason that there is a slight uptick in the debt service tax rate is because we focus on the total tax rate because that's what the taxpayers are actually seeing. So it's the debt service tax rate and the operations tax rate. So now what was a line graph is now a bar graph. The debt service tax rate is in green. The operations fund tax rate is in blue. You can see in 2021, it's at about 66 cents, I think. And then in 2002, we projected that to remain the equivalent. So we're factoring in all the property tax levies, funds in this to make sure that we're maintaining an equivalent total tax rate to what it was this year in 2021. On this last slide, it's showing the maximum parameters of the bond issue that Jacob and Dr. R. already talked about. $1.2 million of a par amount of the bonds due to total borrowing amount, approximately 100,000 for professional fees, your bond counsel, your municipal advisor, underwriter, all that type of stuff that goes into a bond issue, which will leave the school corporation with about $1.2 million in hard and soft project costs. The estimated interest rate expense because we're paying the bond issue back in approximately two years. And as most of people know, interest rates are extremely low right now. We're looking at an estimated interest rate expense of about just under $50,000. So the next couple of rows there have some, what the impact of this bond issue would be. The debt service tax rate impact, that is solely just what the maximum payment would be divided by the AB. The debt service rate, I already showed that there's going to be a slight tick up in just the debt service fund. But most importantly is that bottom line, and that's the total tax rate. So that's factoring in both the debt service fund and the operations fund. And that's where there's not going to be a tax rate increase above the 2021 rate. So I'll pause there for any questions from the board or a comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, it's time for anyone that has here in the audience that would have a comment or a question about this bond hearing.
Good evening, I'm Julie Campbell. I just had a question. I couldn't see the presentation. But for the bond, you said the cost of the bond. So it was 10% or fees and all. That seems high, 10%. Is that the norm? I don't know, I'm just asking.
No, that's pretty standard. I mean, when you're looking at a professional fee being about $100,000. And that covers the 100, the bond count, municipal advisor, rate agency, trustee, all of that factored in. It'll probably be a little less than that, but we are putting in maximum.
So 10% is the norm for...
I would say the 100,000 is pretty accurate when you're looking at the bond issue, it's up to maybe $5 million or so.
So $5 million would be 10% of the law?
No, I think it would still be probably around the 100,000, so.
So is that the minimum then regardless of amount?
Not necessarily the minimum. That's just kind of an estimate of where it would be on all bond issues for maybe zero, you know, $5 million.
This is expensive, the cost and the duration.
That soft cost, I've been doing this since the days, 1980s. Used to be 30% back in the day. Now the legislature got involved and now you're looking at maybe 10%. The law forward.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I would like to ask for a motion to close the bond hearing. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of closing the bond hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All vote the same sign. Motion carries. Bond hearing has been closed. Next on the agenda is the, I'd like to open the hearing for the additional appropriation. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Jacob McKellen again, both of you.
Yes, so this hearing is a comment on the appropriation of the funds. Again, assuming that you guys passed the 1028 resolution, the bond resolution, and the appropriation resolution to your regular session, this is where you would take comments. And again, just for the record, this is the proceeds of the bonds that now do not exceed $1,200,000 for the project that we just previously discussed in the last public hearing. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Again, any comments, questions for the board?
Yeah, Mitchell. I need you to propose a budget. Is this before they close the gateway to state of Indiana and tell the top record to change the new school system?
So I think that's a budget question. So this, so this is for the $1,200,000 of the bonds. So I mean, now they're up in the gateway, but the school gave the $1,200,000. Of course, it's a professional loss, soft cost, and then the hard cost of the project. So I thought maybe we were asking a budget question.
I'm asking a budget question.
So then they, they answer, so then the school corporation, the budget that I presented, the debt service fund, and they will repay the payment on that bond issue through the debt service fund in five annual payments over October 21st.
But does it come back from state of Indiana gateway? That we can charge taxes, raise taxes or not?
Yes.
It's already been approved? It doesn't get approved until October?
No, the budget hearing hasn't been approved.
That's right. For your proposal before it goes to state of Indiana gateway, you can state, tell us how much money we can spend in the school system, right?
Well, it'll all be the tax rate of the payment on the bonds.
Yes.
That will be approved when the budget, after the board approves the budget in October.
Okay, it goes to the state, right? Their approval?
It did, yeah.
I'm getting it. Or their approval then?
Yes.
So they can readjust this after you guys propose a budget?
They could, once the bonds have been sold, then if the school corporation has incurred a debt at that point, then the DLF state is going to approve the budget, fund the repayment of it.
Fund or refire, discount, right? They control what you're going to charge, what the school system proposes for taxes. They controls what you guys, and they can hear for raising the budget.
That's correct. And so the debt service fund, how they operate the debt service fund is that once a bond is sold, there's a payment scheduled.
That's true.
So once, when I do the budget and we issue to them a repayment schedule of any debt incurred by the school corporation, then it is somewhat of their responsibility to make sure they approve a tax or some revenue source to fund the repayment of those payments through the debt service fund.
Okay, I understand now. I have a township trustees, I know all about the gateway and taxes and everything else. So thanks for the answer.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments or questions? Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask again for a motion to close the meeting. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the additional appropriation hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All vote the same sign. Motion carries. The additional appropriation hearing has been closed.
Michael Shannon, when we get that paper, do you like people to go there and see it?
Absolutely. My hope is that we have it early enough that we can feature it during basketball games where they're also full, all kinds of other things that we invested in in our high middle science pathway and I'm going to fit in to show more classes are alive in the ways that they're burning. And I'll ask any other questions.
Richard, for Grant.
Okay, I would like to call to order then the regular session for the September school board meeting. Board, if anyone has any comments on the agenda items. Next thing on the agenda would be the consent agenda. And the consent agenda includes payroll claims, payroll report, budgetary claims, certified and non-certified personnel report. Just for your information, board members receive these documents in advance of our meeting. So we have plenty of time to look over these and check these out and ask any questions that we might have. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as it's presented.
I'd like to, Richard, I'll make sure of the screen.
Okay.
I make a motion to you, or to the consent agenda.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All vote the same sign. Motion carries. Student field trip, Dr. R.
We have one at the Mooreville High School outstate King Island for the girls' basketball.
Excuse me, Mooreville High School.
What did I say?
Mooreville, you said Mooreville.
So I said Mooreville. And I said Mooreville.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mooreville.
Thank you.
And we're telling you to file a bill of insurance.
Well, we have a four-day list.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the student field trip for the girls' basketball team.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the field trip for the girls' basketball team, King Island, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All vote the same sign. Motion carries. Curriculum report, instructional report, and road update. This is Suzie Lewis.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, I'm going to provide district information tonight that might be interesting and important for you to know. Bus drivers, we need bus drivers. And I know the community and the community resource team, everyone always wants together when the students are in need. And right now, we need bus drivers to sub. We need bus drivers to take routes. Dennis Mills, the transportation director, and some of his mechanics, who also have bus driver license and have been driving for us on some occasions. So we, and Dennis especially, and his staff will be happy to train and/or share information about benefits, pay, schedule, et cetera, with anyone who's interested. Or if you know anyone interested, please send them our way by looking for bus drivers for our students. Our daily curriculum and technology, the academic curriculum in all of our district schools is being facilitated for the students via touchscreen devices for K-1 students and Chromebook devices for grades 2 through 12. Classrooms at the secondary schools, which are Federal Intermediate Academy, Woodland Middle School, and Martinsville High School are equipped with interactive panels. Elementary school teachers use smart boards and projectors. Our district has 281 teachers and 110 instructional aides, click aides, library aides who bring the learning experience to life every day for our students. Teachers and staff members who are here this evening, please stand and be recognized for your dedication to our students. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight. A national hot topic, one of the topics that we've been talking about at several of our board meetings. You may recall my comments from last board meeting that the MSD of Martinsville does not support the teaching of critical race theory. In saying that, we want parents to be informed and aware of facts that directly impact the curriculum. Therefore, district leaders are connecting and are actively engaged with parents and community members to gain insight, explore, discuss, and seek resolution about questions as they surface. Together, we've identified a few areas that present concerns and are proactively planning to ensure that our curriculum is politically neutral and balanced, reinforcing that the MSD does not support explicit or implicit teachings that can be construed as CTR or SEL in nature. I want to share a few things here that are part of our plan to be transparent. Sharing the curriculum refresh schedule for all subjects as they are staggered in renewal phases. And by curriculum refresh, we mean the adoption of textbooks, adoption of enrichment activities that go along with those texts. We want to also front-load a curriculum so that parents have an opportunity to view prior to the students bringing it home. Providing alternative options for students and parents with that curriculum. Enhancing our district's website to be more user-friendly with time. Enhancing our district's website to be more user-friendly with timely, well-written curricular information, so that you have that information about schoolwork, school curriculum. We will continue to pursue dialogue on the details and logistics of how to effectively communicate and share this information with parents and concerned community members, so stay tuned, there will be more. Bottom line, we are working cooperatively, which leads to opportunities to glean positive outcomes for our community and students. Our ultimate goal is to keep our community secure and especially united on the best education for our youth and for our future as a community in Martinsville. Communication, we believe open communication lines and the answer for solving problems and for building a stronger team. We've created a communication culture, and we talked about that at last meeting, lots of you are using it, you're seeking out principals, teachers, board members, I've had several calls, met several people, and, uh, I think right now, we have open lines of communication, hopefully you feel very comfortable to reach out and to talk with any of us. We want to make sure that by all of us working together, Martinsville is the public school of choice in Morgan County. Enrollment, our district's enrollment is curd- currently today at three thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven students. Last year, on the state's twenty twenty ATM, the average daily membership count day, our enrollment was three thousand eight hundred and forty-six. So therefore, Martinsville has approximately one hundred and forty-one more students enrolled at our schools this year compared to last year. This year's count day is tomorrow, September seventeenth, so we will note tomorrow where we stand with that count and with that number. We continue to be encouraged by the numbers and the excitement our students and families are showing in our district this year. One of the reasons they're excited, our reason online, this school year, our district is providing online instruction as a choice for all students. Currently, we have eighty-plus students enrolled in online instruction. The district's instructional team of Jenny Oakley, Tiffany Oswald, and Tiffany Grant created the curricular platform that they received from all the teachers in the district from last year, put it together so we have a platform to use this year, and are facilitating instructions for grades K through six. And the secondary students are under the direction of the same instructional team and are enrolled in Indiana online courses. Another reason that our enrollment is moving up and people are excited in Martinsville about school is our alternative education program. With the alternative education program for grades nine through twelve, we create graduation pathway plans to accommodate and serve all students' curricular needs, interests, and real life schedules. Internships, night schools, customized plans are helping to make this happen. Currently, we are serving fifty-six Martinsville students through our alternative education program. Mrs. Melanie Middling is serving as the alternative education program coordinator this year, and if you want to reach out to her or me, I'll share my cell number with you after the meeting, we can get anyone that you know who wants to graduate or who wants to get involved with school, we can get them enrolled today. Looking ahead, we're excited to present a short video about Martinsville schools. It's going to be about five minutes long, it was created by someone collaborating with CIBSC program, and they've been here videotaping our community, overheads of our schools with drones, and, um, all the historic generations of success that we have hanging in our buildings, pictures, plaques, banners, they've been picturing, uh, they've been videotaping, people talking about what's happening in our schools. It's going to be a short video, but we're going to have it on our front homepage of our website, so that anyone that wants to know about Martinsville schools can click on that arrow, and we'll be, we'll be talking about Martinsville schools, and our, our focus is going to be generations of success. That's all I have. Our teachers are united, thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity to talk this evening, I'll be glad to answer any questions about curriculum, testing, technology, human resource, anything you want to talk about after the meeting, I'll be hanging around here. Or do you guys have any questions for me tonight?
Do we have a timeline on the video, when we might expect that back?
Jane, do we know that?
We get our first look in October, early October, so hopefully soon after that.
First look, does that mean all of this, or no? Nah? Okay.
Whoever wants to see it.
Soon.
With the, um, questionable material, I'm a bit broad, uh, um, how, how is that being handled, like, is that material not being presented to the kids anymore, or, or is there a timeline to get that material no longer presented to the kids, or what, what exactly is the timeline?
Questionable material.
The, the, about the CRT, and you said that there was some.
Some parents have had concerns, some community members have had concerns about maybe some of the subject matter with maybe a literature unit, and so they've been working with English teachers, the English department chair from the high school, Mrs. Carrie Randall, has met with a couple of parents and with Mr. Bowles and myself, and so we're doing some rollout, and we said some front loading, giving alternatives and that kind of thing, so that questionable doesn't mean that it's maybe not inappropriate for everyone, it, I mean, I, I think that's what you're talking about, it means that maybe that parent doesn't think that it's appropriate for his or her child, or maybe it's something that we may need to move, remove totally, and if so, making those choices based on everyone's input. Does that answer your question?
Sorry.
Keep going, keep going, I'm good.
I'm not, you're not.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I look forward to talking with you and seeing your community, all of our culture and everywhere else. Thank you.
Okay, next up, thank Shannon, you have a presentation, teacher evaluation.
I don't have any of the written, so I'll try to explain. Um, every year, we need to present our teacher evaluation, rubric, and the latest stat evaluation rubric to the board. Um, last year, there were some changes in statutes that allowed more local decision, and so we worked collaboratively, collaboratively with the administration to tailor our evaluation system, and primarily, this is a teacher-focused system, such that we're looking at planning and classroom instruction. Um, there were pieces of the evaluation, in my opinion, and some others' opinions, were a little bit like double jeopardy, so if there was an issue, it would be penalized multiple times, whereas there are other remedies and more policy to address the potential to observe. Uh, so we looked at that. Another thing that has come out of legislation that was enacted last, uh, April, probably been enacted in July, that passed in April of twenty twenty, was that the state no longer mandates that test scores are tied to teacher evaluations. And what we see with test scores, whether we like it or not, is that social economic, socioeconomic status is directly related to test scores, and not all our schools are in the same spot, and so that seems to us a little bit disparate, so we're working on, we want it to have an equal playing field with regards to evaluation instrument. So for teachers, which is the bulk of the instrument, it's not everything, but it's the bulk, um, we have transitioned that plan to focus on planning and actual instruction and conversations between teachers and administrators and how things go in the classroom. So portions have been removed that created a dual jeopardy or a disparate situation, but it also allows us to focus more on what's happening in the classroom. If there are any specific questions, please let us know. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I say just a thank you to everyone in the room?
Sure.
Totally wrong place, so I apologize, um, I should do this, but I think everyone associated with public education in any capacity, regardless, is having a hard time right now, parent, kids, teachers, staff, board members, it's hard, and I hear it and see it and feel it within forty, and so thank you for everybody just keeping up the fight, because these are our kids in the tonight.
Thank you. Next on our agenda are action items, Dr. Ruberson.
Uh, recommended curriculum, ten twenty-eight resolution on bond issue, is that a program?
Okay, we have a motion to approve the bond resolution, ten twenty-eight. Okay, motion been made, seconded, is ready to discussion. Okay, all in favor of adopting ten twenty-eight resolution on bond, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those same side. Motion carries.
Now we have, uh, recommended approval of bond resolution, as we talked about earlier.
This is all legal, it's out there. Again, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the bond resolution.
Make a motion to approve the bond resolution. I second it.
Motion been made, seconded, okay, more discussion. Okay, all in favor of passing the bond resolution as it was presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those same side. Motion carries.
Additional appropriation, I recommend having a special.
Okay, one final time here, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the additional appropriation resolution.
I'm in favor of the additional appropriation resolution.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded, any other discussion? All in favor of approving the additional appropriation resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those same side. Motion carries.
Here we have several donations, I believe I counted fifteen, uh, totally, I believe, fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, plus twenty cases of pan sanitizers donated, uh, from a very generous community that continues to have a lot of donations that everyone brought. Uh, we had a thousand dollars from the Indianapolis Colts, to the high school football, ECA program, uh, Delta Fated Hall, the high school National Arts Society, five hundred dollars donation from Midwest Food Bank, the MSD, MSD of Martinsville, for twenty cases of pan sanitizers, donation in memory of Web Ceece, from Tom, I can't pronounce that name, you probably know him, what is that name?
Sue Hammer.
Sue Hammer.
To the high school athletes, fifty dollars, uh, donation from Martinsville Candy Kitchen to MHS Athletes, two hundred dollars, donation from Martinsville Vision Clinic to MHS Athletes, four hundred dollars, donation from Wells Marvel and Hall to MHS Athletes for four hundred dollars, donation from Martinsville Family High School Center, uh, Dr. Michael Neal to MHS Athletes, four hundred dollars, donation from Costas Funeral Home to MHS Athletes for eight hundred dollars, donation from Home Bank to MHS Athletes for eight hundred dollars, donation from Chapman and Orpadonics to MHS Athletes for eight hundred dollars, donation from Subway to MHS Athletes for eight hundred dollars, donation from Ready to Grow to MHS Athletes for one thousand two hundred dollars, donation from Neal Summers to MHS Athletes for three thousand five hundred dollars, and a donation from H and R Block to MHS Athletes for three thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ruberson. Okay, I think we might pack these all these together, so, uh, if I can have a motion to accept all the donations as presented by Dr. Ruberson.
I want to leave all donations set.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor of accepting the donations as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those same side. Motion carries. Okay, to completion of the, uh, school board meetings, a regular business meeting, a visitor who wishes to speak may do so at the discretion of the president, the visitor will be required to state as in her full name, and will begin the opportunity to speak using the same guidelines as used for agenda items, not to exceed two minutes. It shall not be permissible to privately present or discuss complaints against individuals of MSD of Martinsville at any school board trustee meeting, such charges or complaints shall be presented to the board of school trustees in writing and shall be signed by the person making the charge of the complaint. Or strict conduct shall not be permitted at any meeting of the school board trustees, uh, nor by any, uh, inflammatory or abusive remarks, tolerated. Uh, however, that's all kind of a negative tone to it, uh, I would like to say, as we alluded to at the last meeting, that we do appreciate, uh, people coming here and being in attendance, uh, we do feel like we've made some decisions as a board here that's affected what we've done inside our buildings, that have come as a result of conversations we've had either through this forum or through other forums that we have presented here, uh, so sometimes we as board members may not like what you have to say, or some of the audience may not like what you have to say, but dialogue is always positive, it is always good, we just ask that we keep it professional here, and, uh, as I think you probably know, if you've been coming to our meetings, uh, we do listen, that doesn't mean that we can do everything you ask us to do, we do listen to what you have to say. So at this time, I'd like to ask for anyone, did we ask outside that for a minute?
Yes.
Well, my question is going to be, uh, Dr. About your superintendent, you find the superintendent, when is this going to be completed, or how Miss LaDray has an intern, Dr. Robertson, for a leadership?
Well, I will be here for the secretary person. The application has been put out to all superintendents of the state of Indiana, to four state universities, and to the Indiana Department of Education on September tenth at the last Friday. The deadline for that is October fifteenth, at that point, board will, they'll be reviewing those applications that they come in, they will decide who they want to interview, by the way, the Russell survey will allow the community asking the area for what type of person you're looking for, uh, and then, uh, they will decide who they want to interview, uh, the deadline probably, I was going to say, the first of November, or the eighth of August, could be the end of October, third of October, superintendent meeting will start January first.
Okay, our, this covers, in that conversation, are we looking to move forward with new people? Are we going to look forward to hiring previous superintendents back in the school system? We didn't answer that question, because I know, we know what the answer is going to be, so if you can't answer the question honestly, well, you're going to have an application form, but we, curiosity's killing us, there have been rumors of wanting to come back to the school system.
Don't listen, don't listen to rumors.
Well, it's not really, rumors are pretty close, to be honest, it's not good for a way, it's not good why it's asking, so if we want to move forward with the superintendent, we'll open back, that's all I got to say about it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ruberson.
Donna Harmon.
My name is Donna Harmon, and I wanted to come tonight to thank the board, and also thank Mrs. Lips for offering me the temporary position as an art teacher at South Elementary. It is truly been a blessing, I was hoping I could do it for all. I was hoping I could do it for all here. My mind said we could do this, and the excitement was overwhelming, but my body said something else. So I had to tell them that there's no way I could do this, but I have to tell you, these children, they blessed me beyond measure. So the first thing I wanted to do was I had them do name tags. I wanted to learn every child's name if I was going to do it. And not only did I have to do name tags, but I looked up the meaning of every child's name. And I put it on the back of their name tag. Now, what a precious experience that was, because when they would come up, I would tell them what their name meant. I have pictures, I'd like to show the board too. For example, one little guy said, "Oh, your name means protector." He said, "Oh, yes, my mom said, 'When I grow up, I'm going to protect my family.'" And then I have one little girl came up, she said, "I didn't get a name tag." And I said, "What's your name?", and she told me. And when I looked up the name, the meaning of her name, I said, "Oh, your name means heaven." She said, "Yes, I know." She says, "That's why I did my card all blue, because I wanted to look like heaven." I don't know if that's what it looks like, but that's why I did mine all blue. So it was just such a blessing to be able to do this. I spent hours looking up these child's names and the meaning to those names. And I love this, because after I did this, I saw this in Isaiah forty-nine-one. It said, "Yahweh called me as his own before I was born, and named me while I was still in my mother's womb." And that's how important a child's name is. And so I just wanted you to know, they were so blessed that they couldn't be as blessed as I was. And then, the last picture, don't panic, is my husband with all the name tags on his arm, so we were delivering them to all of the classrooms. I could not have done without him.
Thank you, Dr. Roberson.
Lisa Server. My name's Lisa Server, and first I'd like to thank board for giving me the opportunity here tonight, which mostly, again, I had several things I was going to talk about, but based on what Suzie said, I'm keeping several of these back, because I, I think that that's a good pathway forward for some of the things that should go out, and I appreciate that. So a lot of these things I was kind of saying, I'm not going to say, I'm going to just wait. But I do have one thing that's really been on my mind. And so, this, these are not my words, I got this from the AFT American Federation Teachers website. And I'm not going to read all of it, I wanted to read just a little bit of it, like maybe do it, because it really got to me in my memory. Whereas the American Federation Teachers has had a long history to support through reproductive rights and for Planned Parenthood. And whereas attacks by extremist groups and politicians on reproductive rights and women's health are part of the ongoing war on women in the United States. Whereas those opposed to safe legal abortions where women have demanded and in federal funding to Planned Parenthood, and their spiritual morasses. Resolved that the American Federation Teachers stands for Planned Parenthood and abides to depend on its healthcare services, including contraception, cancer screenings, S D testing, and treatment, and legal safe abortions. And resolved that the AFT condemns and denies long assault on Planned Parenthood. Resolved that the AFT will call upon all of the state affiliates, locals and members, to herbs and legislators, both state and federal, to stand up for women's health and defend not the fine Planned Parenthood. Now, my point in reading this is not to say that any teacher here is for propulsion or supports this. But part of the point is to ask teachers, do you know that that's on air and we love the AFT website? And I would hope that you don't support it. And if that's something that you don't feel like you want your money to go, be there visibly out of that. So we need to let the children, board, and number one be first in our hearts and minds. Thank you.
Lana Karen.
Okay, board members. Can I just do a bit from the first? We have all. Donna, can you look up, see what my name means on it? And I'll make your page, shall we go, stuff? Uh, and Suzie, I, I think I'm going on to one too, I think you've been, maybe I'll make a couple now. I was just wondering if anybody, when we went to buy the buses for the athletic department, was bringing other estimates or bids, or do you do the buses off of? I was just wondering if my estimates were on those buses. Sorry, I think a lot of guys. Because I was just curious about the buses, they seem kind of expensive to me, but, you know, maybe not. I was just wondering if there's any way a person can see what the estimates were paying in from other companies? Was it just one that was decided on? Or was there other people that, you know, you guys looked in the bus, the buses that were provided for the athletic department? Not that I'm against it or anything, I was just wondering that. But the other two things, I think Suzie probably can help me with it now that I, she had that talk up here. So, thank you, you're letting Tom here. Jackie, what about you? Thank you, the board. Thank you, everyone.
My name, your name means compass, still walkers.
Oh, wow. Right, right. Thank you, you're welcome, sweetie.
Tell him, Tom.
Kimberly Mallory. I'm going to say Suzie covered quite a few things that I was going to bring up. I do, I do want to show this. I have a whole stack. This is just since the beginning of the school year this year. This schoolwork is full of biased stuff that was presented to the freshman kids. Topics include illegal immigration, parenting skills, class warfare, taxes. They all, all this stuff comes with very political biased positions and leading questions. We've been working with Suzie and Mr. Boland and some of the English department people to kind of go through, reevaluate some of this stuff, bring out alternatives for people. I always look at it this way and say, you know, we always said we shouldn't expose children to adult problems. These are all adult issues. I have a fourteen-year-old, I would say is very well-versed in world and political issues and her beliefs and moral issues, that kind of stuff. In conversations with her, some of this stuff is like over her head. She cannot think broadly enough to really answer some of these questions. I want to bring out, it's called the illusionary theory. It's when you present something three times, people start questioning their beliefs. They're questioning whether, you know, what I believe is incorrect or not correct. By the seventh time, people are starting to change their beliefs. There's seven articles in here about illegal immigration and how Americans treat illegal immigrants poorly. That's not what I want my kid to know. I don't think that's what a lot of parents want their kids to know. I think we all want our kids to grow up believing that America is a great country, and we have great opportunities here. And so, I'm, I'm extremely pleased that Suzie stepped forward and was willing to talk to us and meet with us, and that people are open to changing and making exceptions for, you know, alternatives for us who don't want this curriculum in our school. My note to the board would be that when curriculum comes around, we really look at, do we have to keep this for six years? Can we look at bringing in alternatives? If we have to stay with it for six years, I guess I can understand, but I do want to see alternatives every week. We did meet with Mr. Boland, and he kind of, he gave us that, he was going to work with us on that, so. Everyone can check out what the kids are doing. Thank you.
Just one time, Bill.
This is not cool, isn't that, that's how, how was I?
After the meeting, you're off to the side of the meeting. Anyone else? Okay, Dr. Roberson?
Well, I was going to talk about the search, but no, no, so much. We'll mention on the search for superintendent, over, if you go on the website and the application and the information that went out, superintendent's IDOB, state universities is on the website. Says superintendent's search, click on that and see everything that's in it. We get a lot of applications, just begrudgingly, a lot, a lot. This one is a mention, probably already known as, the U.S. Constitution is two hundred thirty-four years old, law. On September seventeen, seventeen eighty-four, the U.S. Constitution was adopted. There has never been a country in the district where it has done what we've done. And that Constitution is an amazing document put together by amazing people, two hundred thirty-four years ago. So think about tomorrow, Constitution Day, you don't hear a lot about it. It was used on twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, but I'd like to talk about it. Two hundred thirty-four years ago tomorrow, we have the U.S. Constitution.
Board members? Any comments from board members?
I'd like to say, I'm good, thanks. This week we had our first, I still have our first, United, our unified football game. And it was probably one of the best schools that we've done in a long time. So the next one is in two weeks, September. So we've got the calendar, it's, it's, it's a really fun evening. And then tomorrow night is summertime, we're the football team in school, so there are going to be a lot of fun festivities for the community. Fans will perform, dance line, there should be a fundraiser, parking's there for them. And there is staff to be around. And also a blood drive for one of our volunteer students from three to seven, I believe, at high school. So we can maybe get there and have a great day to do as well. So, it's been a wonderful night, it's been great to be here.
Hey, Heather.
Hi, I'm Kate Banks, real popular lady, because we've got some great kids that I want to talk about from some staff. I want to say congratulations to some volleyball players. Grace Reynolds, who's a senior, got a thousand assists recently. Mackenzie Martin, a thousand kills. I think we can all guess who helped her get there. And Molly Urban, a thousand days as well. So come out and watch volleyball team, it's exciting, and they're on the watch. Second, many of you may not know, but Mr. Ryan Cox, who's the principal at the Harriigan, is also the district high ability coordinator. And he recently created a Facebook page, it's MSD High Ability. You can go out there and search it, I know parents sometimes wonder how can their kid be eligible, what is the criteria for that? So you have a name with that, and it's Mr. Ryan Cox, again at Harriigan. So parents, I know there's sometimes there's a lot of questions, now there's a Facebook page, and you can go out there and read all that information. Also, Brooklyn STEM Academy, their kiddos did videos on WeVideo, and you can see them on YouTube. And they did these projects on national parks that are adorable, they're cute, they're informative. And those kiddos in front of those boards with their actual parks showing up behind them is incredible to watch. So Brooklyn STEM Academy, those teachers, I know Sharon Bigby was involved, I know she sent those to all the board members. You can go out there on YouTube and search those, they're just so cute, you need to watch those. So great job to Brooklyn and your kiddos. Lastly, this is a visual. So when IHSA restricted our attendance at some of our sporting events, Eric Meyer and his team of students stepped in and rocked it. They videoed all the football games, it started with football, then it went to basketball, short after, all the girls' sports. They have been doing a phenomenal job. You should watch their rewind videos, they are awesome. At the last home football game, they had over two hundred and fifty people watching our football game. It's just incredible to listen to them. I have always teased them and told them I was their number one fan. So my sister-in-law gave me her ancient, her ancient rock finger, and so I put a rewind on it, because I've always teased them that I'm their number one fan. So they just did a recent video too, where they interviewed some of our admin. It's phenomenal, you should just watch it. Again, these kids are rock stars, they stepped up. You can watch it from Florida, you can watch it from anywhere. And you're not going to get commentating any better than from these two guys who go to school every day with their administrators or their teachers and with their fellow students. So just go to YouTube and search MHS Rewind, and all of their videos will pop up, and this is what you're going to see, this is the most recent one, I believe it deserves an award. So anyone out there who gets awards or video, you need to get one, because it's really, really awesome. So you need to go watch that. To everyone, I was getting texts at the beginning, this will be on YouTube, this is a cold meeting, because I'm sure you want to watch it over and over again, there was a little problem with sound. I believe it's all worked out and it's all good, so if you want to go back and re-listen to everything, you can, it is now on YouTube and you can, and you can hear it. I know there was some, maybe technical difficulties. Finally, I want to talk to you about something that is really important, and that's your child's safety. I'm proud of the, the measures we've done to create a safe environment for your students. It can be aggravating at times, but it is a method that has worked to keep your kids safe. Recently, without this fashion, without any way in, there are a lot of all-access cards out there. School board members included, and I really don't know why. Why should I or any other board member up here have one? This is all access any door. As a parent in school, you have to buzz in, you have to go to the front office to say who you are. Our principals and our admin and our directors have enough on their plate then to worry about people entering their building without them knowing. We need to make sure that everyone, including construction workers, retired people, have full background checks before getting one of these all-access cards. It is our job to keep your kids safe. It is our number one job. We need to know who has all access. I once could answer that with confidence. Now, I cannot. You need to ask who has access to your child's paperwork, information, our school network, and our security. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, again, I'd like to thank everybody for attending here this evening. We, the next date, we have typically be on the third Thursday of the month, our next month, October will be on Fall 2022. I'm not sure what the date is, but I'm happy. Don't show up on the third Thursday of next month, I will use some friends to stay wherever that day is. But again, it will be posted on the website. Like ask for a motion to adjourn?
I'm in the meeting.
Second. Okay, all in favor of adjourn, signify the same aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned, thank you.